That's I post those all the time on the camera. So if you will, I'll save it for you guys.
Give me a roll.
Like days and every time. Click on that. And then everyone who went there, I didn't. I'm a friend. Yeah. All right, uploads, because I cannot read. Can't find me. You're asking me to listen. Yes, I can.
It works if we need to. We can add a little bit of hand.
So otherwise, I'll be. Yes, it's good, right?
Was that? She should, it's like, I can't say. You know, it's gonna be like extension for you. But I'll be there.
Thank you, Holliday.
Yeah.
I'm on my own. I was just a little. Yeah, I was. I mean, I did a lot. But I think I'll do that. I think I'm doing this. I think it was all. Yeah. I'm glad. I want to make sure I don't. I don't know. But we need to. So I can talk to them. So you'll see anything. I'm going to. I mean, they're sorry. You know. Hey. They have a colleague. Oh, he's not. He's probably got. No, I can't. I'm just, I mean, look at some of them. There's been a bunch of them. Yeah, you know. I can't. Yes. Well, that is the week we were here. Well, I don't know. That's why I was. I want to be able to start. I don't want. We only went to one. So many. This is. Yeah. There is a. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not really. I'm just. Yeah. In the first. Again, last. Yeah. Yeah. So that's. I really. I'm. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not. We didn't. We didn't. We're not. We're not. Ah, maybe. I'm not. So I don't know. I'm not. The last one. I don't know. I don't know. It's. I got a. I mean, you. I don't know. 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 I mean, I'm. I'm. I don't know. 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 She had. Yeah. Been wrong. But it's not. But it was. Oh, I just, just know that. Okay. She needs. I'm. I'm trying to say something. I'm just thinking. She made one. But I don't. I don't want to talk. I have this. I don't. I mean, I. I don't. I don't. So I don't want to. I said. I want to. She was. So it's starting on the. I'm. It's. It's. I'm. Whatever. What's up? I mean, you know. It's funny. Yeah. Well, I like that. I think. I don't know. It's not. I don't know. I'm. 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 I'm very. I'm. I don't know. I don't know. I'm like. I'm not. It's now. I'm. I'm. So yeah. I don't know. I was. I was. Yeah. But it doesn't. First of all. Here's a note. I don't want. That's. I'm. Then. October. And. Yeah. I'm. But. So. I'm. Exactly. I'm. I'm. Yes.
I'm warming here, too.
Have you, uh, look at my back door? I'm like. Help me tell my.
I don't either. I have to look at them at times.
I remember I have it on my phone.
It's in my password. If you're, if I lose that, I'm lost.
I asked you. So I was. I'm enjoying. Now. Same. I'm. I love. My. Looking for. I want to talk about this. I was. I was. I don't even. I don't know. I don't know. I'm. 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 The. I don't know. Absolutely. That's. Because they. It's.
We know. There.
It's. I don't know. There. I don't know. Yeah. You know, it's. I don't. That's okay. I don't. This was. I don't. I can't. So. That's.
The. They're not. They're. We actually. It's. I'm. And so. I think. It's. I don't. And she. I don't. I don't. I don't. It's. Yes. She. Tom, you should be able to connect with Tom. Yeah, we're down to page and a half. So. There. So. Now. If you want. We show. It's. Um. The. You. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. There. There. Alright. I'm. I just. I'm. I'm. Yeah. This one. Thank you. That's. And so. I'm. We. So. I'm. I'm. It's. My. I'm just. I'm. I'm. So. I don't. I don't. I'm. 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 Yeah. Those. So. Yeah. I'm. It's. And. Apparently. But I'm. I'm. But. I'm. You know. And. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. Just. Yeah. 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 So. I'm. He is. He. I'm. There. I mean. I. So. I can have the last. I don't. 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 I'm. So. Next. I want to. I'm. 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 Well, I'm. That's. I'm. 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 We. Are. Not. I don't. It's. I'm. 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 There's. Just. I'm. 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 It's. Right. I'm. But now. And you see. Yeah. Now. You know. That's. That's. Yeah. So. I mean. I'm. So. We. And. I'm. 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 So. We're. I'm. 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 So. I'm. 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 I was. I'm. No. So. It's. Yeah. It was. Yeah. Yeah. In. That was. I. I'm. 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 And. That's. It's. Really. But. You know. I think. I'm. It's. Now. I'm. Yeah. Did you have to re繋下 down there?
I just. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm. I was. I'm. I'm. Good evening, everybody. Ready for that? Good evening, everybody. Um, we ask that, uh, if you would sign in, if you, um, aren't planning on speaking, you can sign in afterwards. But if you do plan on speaking, we'd ask that you sign in and indicate a yes or no, or a yes anyway, so that we know who's gonna, planning on speaking. And we'll get going here just a little bit if, uh, anybody else needs to come up and sign in. Yeah. There. And. We have. We have.
This is the audience person making signing in.
I've seen your expression. They go. We can. Maybe. One more fellow maybe. Always.
That's. I'm. 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 So. I'm. I'm. It's. So. And. I would. It's. History. You have to be told you want to. You know. I think. I don't. And. It's. You know. I'm. And. I'm. It's so. What if I say? It's. Very. You want to say. Comparing that. You know. But. Do you need? To lose? Get him to lose? Maybe. But. Star or something. Sounds. Or.
Alright, good, good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for coming. This is, uh, this is nice to see so many people from the community. Um, it would be nice to see turnout like this for all of our topics. Uh, I was just, uh, just, uh, advised that one other time that, uh, had crowd this big, they were thinking about charging for animals. A dog license or something. Uh, not, not to diminish or anything, just the, the passionate topics for people. So, good evening, uh, for those of you that I haven't met, I'm Bill Hart, and I'm the county judge. And, uh, we're here this evening to talk about the, the library, uh, funding. This is not a library specific topic. This is about the Harney County budget itself. Um. Revenues are, are decreasing, or not decreasing, but, but pretty much staying flat. Uh, and in some respects, maybe a little bit, we're losing a little bit to some, uh, property owners that haven't paid their taxes. A couple of, are one big account specifically. And, um, we just don't have the increase in revenues. The only thing we, we rely on for the general fund is property taxes and PILT, uh, payment of low taxes for public lands. And a few other smaller sources, but those are the primary two big sources for general fund. Um, I wanna, I wanna read the statute that directed us for this evening to be here. And that is Oregon Revised Statute three five seven point six two one, public hearings requiring prior, required prior to abolishing or withdrawing support from public library. No governing body with, which has established a public library under the laws of this state shall abolish or withdraw support for such library without first holding at least two public hearings on the matter, at least ninety days apart. The governing body shall give public notice of the public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the area for two successive weeks, at least thirty days prior to the first hearing. And that has been done in the, in the local newspaper. Now, I want to clarify a couple of, a couple of words in there, uh, abolishing and withdrawing. We have no intention as a county court to abolish the Harney County Library. Uh, the term withdrawing can have different meanings, and that could mean total support, withdrawing total support, or partial or any support thereof. Um, after consulting with our county council, uh, we were advised that if we were to, uh, withdraw any amount of, of funding, uh, that would, uh, affect services, uh, that it would be best to go through this process. And we're trying to be transparent and do that through this process and having these public hearings. So, uh, I can say, from what I know, from, um, the governing body, it is not our intention to abolish the Harney County Library, and it is not our intention to withdraw support for the Harney County Library to the point that it would drastically affect services. Um, you know, halftime of what it is now, or services drastically cut. Uh, that's not our intent. Our intent is to potentially out of these hearings, find some creative solutions, um, to keep what we have, to help, uh, augment what we have, um, and, and move on. Uh, some of those might be volunteers or, uh, more aggressive, uh, searching for grants that would help fund programs in the, in the library. Um, just a couple of, a couple of budgetary notes. Uh, the library itself has a budget this year of four hundred and twenty one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Of that, two hundred and eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty is from general funds. So that means the balance of a hundred and thirty three thousand, five hundred is made up from the foundation. Excuse me just a moment. Is made up from a, from a contribution from the foundation, state funding, and other, uh, smaller grants, the Vogel Grant, you may have heard from the Cool Grant, um, and some other smaller funding sources. Um. Labor itself, out of that four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, the labor for the library consists of three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. That's two thirds, three quarters, uh, whatever, somewhere in there, in between, um, of the budget goes to labor. And that's just some background to kind of, kind of let everybody know where the budget stands with the library. As it is right now, the library, out of all the general fund recipients, all the departments and other funds that receive money from fun, funds, from the general fund, uh, the library is sixth in, in the, uh, line of recipients, the sixth largest recipient of funds from the general fund. Um. And that equates to, out of thirty one different departments and other recipients of funds, uh, that's five percent of the general fund budget. Um, couple other things to note, um, the library, over the last fourteen years, from the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget to current day budget, has, um, increased seventy point four one percent. And an average over those fourteen years of five percent a year, five point zero three percent a year. The general fund revenues themselves have increased over the past fourteen years forty three point seven two percent, with an annual average of three point one two percent. So, just in those numbers alone, the, the library is outpacing our revenues by two percent. Um, all of this information is on the packet, on the agenda packet, on, on our website. And, um, we've got, uh, other documents in there. There's a list of all the other libraries in the state, their FTE, their total revenue, uh, total expenditures, et cetera. So it's there for everybody to review, the same information that we're reviewing. Um. I think that's all I have basically for, for the budgets side of things. Um, I want everybody to know that the letters, the newspaper articles, everything is a part of the record. We have taken every one of those and uploaded them and made them a part of that same agenda packet. So everybody's word, uh, whether it's written or tonight in verbal, in person, is part of the record, and it will be considered. Um, some of the common tones, though, that we're seeing in the, uh, in the letters and emails, range from, um, a warming, warming and cooling center, um, literacy program for children, the ready to read preschool outreach, battle of the books, exam proctoring, internet access, computers and hotspots, library of things, foods, food saver items, kitchen items, and books and movie rentals are, are some of the over, uh, major, major concerns that people are concerned with that, that are protected, the services at the library. Um, so we just kinda put that all together. Again, want you to know that we, we're listening and we're hearing that, and, um, it'll cut, take into consideration any decisions that we make.
Could I just ask a quick question? Would it be honest enough for those of us involved to sit in and do the dots?
Sure, come on in.
Come on in.
Appreciate that. Are any of you, are any of you wishing to speak this evening?
I'm not. I'm listening. I, I reserve my right to go.
Okay, that, if you think you might, might speak, let me ask you that you sign in.
I'll be. Speak.
Make a comment, speak, whichever, however. Um, so to continue, again, this is, this is not a library specific topic. This is a budget specific topic. Um. We are, have, and will review all departments and funds that receive money from the general fund because it's limited. Uh, the only way we're gonna come out of this with any additional, uh, funding for the general fund is in, increased building, increased, uh, uh, taxation, property taxes, uh, not, not increasing them in that manner, but I mean additional properties that we draw, uh, at the current rate and everything, um, that we would draw revenues from. The, uh, the payment and low taxes that we get from our public lands in the county is, none of us agree with the formula there, but we're, what we're left with what we get. So, outside of that, there's really not a whole lot that we can do to generate more revenue within the county beyond economic development. Um. Some things that, that we've already done in this budget, and we will continue to look at, is the other funds that are outside of the general fund that do receive funding from the general fund as a supplement. We're five, trying to find ways that those funds can stand on their own, if possible, and, and, um, uh, minimize the, the burden on, on the general fund by those other funds. Um. There's some things we've already done, and some things in the works to do that as well, and it'll help bring up some funding within the general fund. But in the future, as time goes on, I'm not seeing a very, very, uh, rosy picture for our revenues for the county. So, that's why we're here this evening. As we progress throughout the evening, um, commissioners will have their opening remarks. Um, we'll have, we're gonna put the microphone up here at this table. If you want to speak, we'd ask that you come up to the microphone so that it can be recorded and, and everybody can hear. We'd ask that you keep your comments as close to three minutes as possible. I'm not gonna cut you right off at three minutes or whatever, but we'll never get through this if there's, looks like there's a lot of yeses on there that want to speak this evening. Um. I know I'm probably gonna forget something, but anyway, I'll, I'll let it go at that and hand it off to Commissioner Shellman.
I haven't done my tests. You know, everybody's fine. Yeah. Well, we do thank public for coming out tonight. This is, uh, great to see members of our community, the level of care that they have. Uh, it's like, you know, chart says, they'd want to see it every meeting. That'd be awesome. Um, one thing that I want to mention, uh, you know, is, as we look at vegetarian constraints, uh, that really does fall on our shoulders to make sure that we're making wise decisions on your behalf as a community. And we take that very seriously. Um, this is an opportunity to help explain to the public some of the limitations that we do have within those vegetarian constraints. Uh, we are working with a finite amount, really. Um, and so as we look at essential services that need to be met within the county, uh, as well as backup for some of those essential services that we do not currently have that could put our county in jeopardy, that's why we're looking at all budgets, including the libraries, is trying to make sure that they're not outspending our general fund revenue. And so we have to make sure that we're able to provide the essential services that you all of us taxpayers expect, and that we're required to provide by state, as well as make sure that we do have some backup and some cross-training for some essential positions that you do not currently have, but put us in a bad position in the county. If some of those employees were to ever have to step away from that position. And so we are looking at being able to make good decisions that help lead to secure outcomes into the future. This is just one of these requirements that hold a public hearing on this. I think it's really good because it also allows us to have discussions about that bigger picture. Uh, the bigger picture in this county, uh, with some places that I intersect as a commissioner, is some of the water issues in the county. Uh, many of you know or are aware of the fact that groundwater has been over allocated in our basin. And we're working through that role-making process currently. But the implication of that is, if we have reduction in groundwater usage, it can also really affect our tax base and the tax revenue that's brought in through that. And so, as we are trying to make sure that we're preparing for future adjustments that could have come to the county and will come in some form, uh, this is just one area where we're having to say, what is our best path forward to ensure that we aren't over budgeted in the future? Uh, how do we try to make sure that we're taking steps now to prepare for that? And educating the community as part of those steps. Uh, I attend many order meetings, and I guarantee you we have, that this kind of turnout at those, and I wish we did, because I do believe that that's a topic that the community should have more awareness around. Uh, it will impact all of you in one way, shape, or form. Um, and so that's just one thing. Uh, Blue's Mount Porsche planning effort is also taking place. Those of you that love your public lands and resources, that's a, a policy issue that does impact that use, which then has a direct economic impact on us, depending on those outcomes. And so there's a lot of things that we do and intersect with on your behalf, that we're trying to make sure that we're making good decisions on, and trying to have the best outcomes of. And so, you know, our doors are always open. Uh, you know, feel free to contact us if you have any, you know, questions or concerns or want to weigh in on some of those issues. Uh, it's just as important as the issue that we're dealing with here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Patty Dardo, Harney County Commissioner, for anyone who doesn't know me. Uh, I'm gonna stick to my script here. This, these are the same comments that I offered at this morning's hearing when it opened, and it relates to our full-scale fiscal outlook in the county. And, and that, first, I want to thank you very much for coming here and this morning for your comments, for emails, et cetera. We do appreciate hearing how important the library is in so many aspects to this community. I am the county court representative. I am the county court representative to the library advisory board and I'm also an active user of the library and we have a wonderful library. Unfortunately, the Harley County budget is stretched very thin. This is the result of many years, even decades of a and overall in real terms trend of declining revenues. With no significant prospect of sustainable change to reverse that trend. The lack of a large living wage employer. Declining state funding over the years. And static and insufficient federal payments, as been mentioned, the payment low taxes, secure schools. These are always, um, they they haven't changed significantly from when they were established many years ago. They're not keeping pace with the cost of doing business. It all this leaves us where we have to reduce and stabilize our expenditures across all county services. In a way that the county has never had to do before, as far as I know. Our deliberations and budget planning will be considering all county services and departments, not just and only the library. The Harley County Court and the Harley County Budget Committee will be very carefully and very transparently considering and deliberating on how to budget under this scenario. Whether somebody do not have sufficient funds to keep services and payroll at the current levels. Unless something unexpected and favorable occurs, which they are not anticipating. We are moving forward with public hearings, conversations and public work sessions. In the months to come, in order to best prepare ourselves and the community for likely budget cuts. We want the community to understand the situation. And we do not want to wait until after the beginning of the calendar year to help create that awareness. All departments will be evaluated, not only the library. However, we are fulfilling our obligation with this hearing under O R S three five seven point six two one, which does apply specifically to libraries. I'm hopeful that with so many people who clearly value the library. That many ideas, strategies and initiatives really merge. With this awareness. Unlike our other county departments, the library has resources such as the Harley County Library Foundation. Which manages a large financial endowment for the library. And has options such as seeking voter approval to try to create a special taxing district for the library. Our other county departments have no such options. Some people have suggested to us that surely there are other cuts that can be made in the budget. Some here, some there to help prevent reduced funding to the library as well as to other. Departments. And we have been doing that for the past six years. Since the county budget crisis. Every year. And we have evolved on that approach. Regarding another suggestion, trying again to get a county transient lodging tax voted in. We can certainly as the county court consider referring that to the voters again. County court has already placed it on the ballot twice so far and it failed multiple times. In fact, the second time it failed by a larger margin, but perhaps it might be approved. This time, if we do that with better advanced publicity, with more community awareness. Of how dire the county finances are. A transit lodging tax could provide some funding for our budget and that would be helpful. The wildfires that we are experiencing are having a devastating impact. Impact on many of our fellow ranchers and property owners. This loss of assessed value. Of their property. Will likely mean some proportion of the county property taxes charged to them in the future. Which will further decrease county revenues. In other words, county finances have never been so strapped. Our relative revenues do not keep pace with the ever increasing levels of expenditures. So this hearing is very valuable. And I uh, appreciate having this opportunity to present these heavy thoughts that are. On my mind and in our hearts all the time. And I look forward to hearing. And communicate with us because we do value your input. Thank you.
As you can tell. As you can tell, microphones aren't quite as sensitive, uh, pick up quite as good as we'd like them to probably. That one might be a little bit better, but please uh, try to speak into it as as close as possible. All right, um, at this time then, um, well, I want to, I wanted to uh, mention a couple of other things too. Um, some of the staff within within the county may have um. Received the department heads anyway, may have received uh, an offer, uh, email offering an opportunity. To provide their perspective um, for budgets in their departments. Uh, it wasn't, I wasn't mandatory, didn't uh, tell them all, any of them to come if they had to or anything else. But I wanted the full picture to be told as far as budgets. I don't think there's anybody here from any of the county departments this evening. That as is the library, but. Um, and and you're welcome and you're welcome to do so. Just if um, if there's any others, I don't think there's anybody else. Any other departments. So I think that'd be a good place to go to next is we'll have Cheryl. Please speak for the library.
First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. The help so that I love them. Today, Judge Hart, you mentioned. About looking for creative solutions for our library. And you mentioned two things. One of them was a more aggressive grant search. And you s-. But yet, when we talked about my budget. You stated that you don't support getting grants because it takes employees away from their regular duties. So, but you also mentioned that you did a Google search and we found six grants that. Were appropriate for the library. So I would like to see those because we're always interested in applying for grants. Um, you also said not many grants for utilizing, so I'd kind of like to give you just a little overview. Of the grants that we have have come into the library. Over the last couple of years. So in the library budget, there is a grant called State Aid. It's around twenty thousand dollars a year. It comes from the state library and it supports children's services. Uh, zero to five literacy and summer reading programs. We need. In the past, in two thousand fifteen through two thousand nineteen, we got the Cool Grant, which also. Support it. Well, we used it to support bringing the libraries back. To the school districts and the E S D. We received sixty thousand dollars that uh, that went to the library foundation as our fiscal agent. In your budget. Documents that you have, you show the Cool Grant at about thirty six hundred. That right now is a contract between us and the school district. We are still providing cataloging services for them. They pay us for that and we put it in that line. The vocal brand is a was. Ed Vogel was a local rancher. He just loved the library. He came to the library. All the time. He relied on it for books. He gave uh, Amazon gift cards and they would buy books with that money and then he would be the first one to read them. When he passed away, we. Gave, he willed his estate. To the library foundation. And it was put in an endowment under his name and you will see that as a line item in our budget. At this point, we give this the distribution of eighteen thousand dollars a year and we use that for all kinds of adult materials, books. Uh, we use it for hoopla, we use it for um. Uh, streaming services. And then. The one I have a question about is the other brands. There's, it shows fifteen thousand. I don't even have that in my budget, so I'm not sure what the other brands is. Uh, maybe we can figure that out. Um, other brands that we got and went to the foundation. Were for the landscaping of the west side of the library. It's our library park. It's very beautiful now. We have improved the neighborhood. We received uh, twenty six thousand from Roundhouse. Uh, foundation and the Ford Family Foundation and then the. Library Foundation paid for the rest of it around twelve thousand. We received an L S T A grant from the state library for the Western History Program. We were able to buy new equipment, more um, modern equipment, including a new computer for our archivist. Um, we also created a database. We partnered with the Historical Society. So we have combined our collections. You can see museum collection and library collection together. And we also are uh, indexing all the oral histories that were done and. That is. We also received another fourteen thousand from Oregon Humanities. Another sixty one hundred from Oregon Cultural Trust and Cultural Coalition is still supporting us. And they've given us eleven thousand so far for this public. We received a grant from the Library of Things Heat Preservation. It was almost two thousand dollars. That came from the Roundhouse Foundation through the Libraries of Eastern Oregon. We just recently received another L S T A grant from the state library, the forty nine thousand, and we are creating a maker's space. To provide STEM classes for our young children in this community. So that's, I want, that's covers the grants. Um, and the other thing you mentioned was volunteers. Last year, we had ninety three volunteers. Some of those were our board members. Some of those were kids. I don't think any of them want to run the library, but they are willing to help us out. And then I want to go back to um, some of your meetings and some of the minutes that you had. So I was told, also the department heads were told. That the money for the finance clerk, which started sort of in my mind, started this whole process. Will be available January first. So it doesn't need to necessarily come from the library for that. In the June court minutes. It also mentions. Um. That we were told that we would have no step increases back to twenty twenty one because of the tight budget. Well. Um, under one of these, um. In your minutes.
Agenda topics.
Thank you. It says right here that um, Smith sought clarification regarding step increases. Hart explained that employees were not eligible if they received a step increase in twenty twenty one or earlier. Okay, so that's what we were told. Hart also explained that he missed the ninety day step increase for the executive assistant, so they added that as well. I know nothing about ninety day step increases. None of my employees request that. We don't have a step increase policy that I know of. So I think that needs to be addressed by the county for sure. So those are my comments uh, right now.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, just a couple of quick comments there. I will, from our, from our last conversation when we talked about grants, um. I'm going to have to say that there was a misunderstanding between the two of us because I did not say anything about uh. Uh, not not liking grants because it takes staff time to to manage those. I I mean, I'm I'm obviously suggesting it, so I know it's going to take staff time to do that. And for the most part, um, that's the purpose of the foundation is to apply for and manage those grants. Uh, a lot of the grants that you mentioned, I have no record of. They're not on the budget. For the last, from two thousand ten to two uh, two thousand ten to current day, a lot of those sums and grants that you mentioned are not in the budget. Um. Which is something we're going to have to to look at. And I do have a meeting with the foundation next week to look at what grants have have uh. Been obtained by them and been applied to the library because that's revenue to the library and it's not being, it's not being recorded. Um. What else was there? Um. Apologize, my brain just went blank. Um. Couple of other things that you mentioned there, um, as far as minutes, the the top stuff from the minutes. And a policy, a compensation policy, right? The county does not have a compensation policy and we are currently. In the process of having a uh, classification and compensation study done of all the positions. There hasn't been one done fully since nineteen ninety eight. So we're undertaking that. And out of that, and a part of the contract that we have for that is a, the creation of a compensation policy that will identify. When and how a person will progress from. Initial higher step one to step seven. So we are working on that. Um. So from there, we'll move into the. Other public that would like to speak. I have Mary Fur, sorry. You passed. Um, Doug Fur.
Hi, my name's Doug Fur. Um, I'm. Part of the library. Board. And. Thank you to everyone, each and everyone that's here, um, because this is to me a very uh. Important subject. The things that I wanted to talk about are are going to be kind of. Brief, but I'm going to face a little bit on your budget message that I. Uh, read earlier, just for clarification. But um. Your goal. And I I assume it's the goal of the court. Is to work towards having a minimum of. Three to a maximum of six months operating reserves. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that could be to the detriment of the employees if you um. Pull back. Step increases, et cetera. Um, but what I looked at was you have created a new position. And I don't know if you have a a job description for it. But it's slated to begin January. Of twenty twenty five. And um. That's where it all started because you were. Contemplating transferring an F T E. Full-time employee from the library to the courthouse for this new position. And I was just wondering why you didn't use. Um, I'll just give an example. On the same floor where your office is, you have. The executive, uh.
Assistant.
Assistant, thank you. Uh, you have the treasurer and you have the uh, human relations person. And I didn't understand why you couldn't do a a cross-training between the three. Um, because. I know that. During normal working hours, that at least two of those are on. Boards and I know that that there are boards that serve the community. But when you look at it and say that that. Their job is so imperative that they don't have time. To cross-train, but yet they'd have time. To leave the the. Building, they go to somewhere else where a a board meeting is just. To me, you know, it's just kind of like a not managing your time problem. Um, and one thing that I don't understand is, excuse me. Our budget. For libraries plus four hundred thousand dollars. And you said that that three quarters of that goes for. Uh, personnel. But yet. A quarter of that is given by the foundation or by other means. And you say that it's the sixth largest. I think that it's possibly that the library is the largest. Entity that brings in money. Um, of all your departments, how many departments? Actually bring in. Fees, taxes. Or any kind of monies. I think that the library brings in. Probably the most. Um. But. The one thing that really I don't understand is I went through the budget and just for lodging and meals. You budgeted sixty something thousand dollars. For this year, this coming budget. And last year and the year before and the year before, it was less than thirty thousand. So to me, that's. So to me, that's quite a padding of the budget to, to more than double it. Then that's countywide. Um, so possibly there's savings there. And the other thing is you have several funds. That I know that you want to have three to six months operating. But in the library alone, you have over eighteen thousand dollars in funds. That are available for the budget, but yet they're not utilized. So. Pardon me for being nervous, but um. I just, I just think that, that a lot of it might be that you. You, when I say you, I'm talking about the governing body, might want to look closer at the cost of, for instance, lodging. And why is it budgeted so high? When historically, it's never come even half of, of that price. Thank you.
Um, as far as that lodging budgeted amount, I didn't bring the budget up with me, so I can't verify that or what, or not. Um, I can't say why, if, you know, in past years, if the average has been around thirty thousand, then it would be sixty thousand now. I'm gonna have to, I'll have to double check that. I have no reason why we would have budgeted that high. That budget though, for travel and lodging, because it's um. Uh, general fund and it's in the, in Department zero two five, which is the. Covers all the general fund departments, the assessor's office, uh, treasurer, everybody. Um, so that's what those funds are for in that fine item and I, I'll have to double check it. I can't say yes or no to what that actually is right this moment. As far as, as far as other departments that generate revenues. This year, for instance, the general fund revenues are four million, seven hundred thousand, four hundred, seven hundred forty two thousand and some change. The total expenditures for general fund is eight million, four hundred and seventy four thousand. So there's, there's another four million dollars of revenues there.
Correct.
That are coming from different sources, just like the library has, has a hundred and thirty three thousand this year.
Correct.
So there are other generating, but there, that's not enough to, to run any of those departments fully. Um, it helps, but it doesn't run it fully, or those additional revenues won't run them completely. I, I'm definitely will have to look at the um. At that uh, travel and lodging line. If it's six, if it's at sixty, I'm gonna say it was in error. I want to say to everybody too, that this year, the budget's been passed this year. It's not our intent this year either to make cuts in this budget season. These are conversations that we just can't do during the month or two that we're in the budget cycle. So we're doing this ahead of time. Um, it just, it does this ninety day period in between and everything. It takes too long. We'd never be able to get it done in time for budget season. So yes, there are other departments that, that have uh, revenue that come into them as well. Next person, Fred Flippenz.
Thank you, Joe Fur. Uh, first thing I'd like to make a comment is, um, I'd like to thank the county court. For allowing us to come at six o'clock. Um, you know, we made a comment, a lot of people don't show up to meetings. Uh, I might look old and probably should be retired, but I'm not. I have a full-time job. And I really get upset because a lot of our public entities hold meetings at ten o'clock. I'm at work, I can't share that, and so. You know, even like the water meetings, the state holds them during the middle of the day. So it's a little hard to get to all of those. So. I, I thank you for making that a contribution. Uh, as I said, I'm Fred Flippenz, uh, citizen of Horney County. Um, I also am president of the Horney County Library Foundation and have been with the foundation. For over ten years, uh, working with them. Uh, I also worked uh, with the foundation and the county. To set up the loose fund with the Oregon Community Foundation, which has helped, you know, make that fund last. Because for people's knowledge, that fund was dwindling away. Because the county's only option was to invest that money in the state pool. And at the time, the state pool was paying basically zero on your investment. And so you were using the fund as it was supposed to be. Help support the library and that fund was dwindling. In fact, in the short period of time. That we negotiated to have those funds put before even Community Foundation and the Library Foundation. We started out with a little over two million dollars. And by the time we even got the agreement put together, it was down to one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since we have done that fund, the Library Foundation has returned. From that fund back to the county over a million dollars. And the fund balance is just close to three million dollars. Because it is invested more wisely than our state government. So I'm gonna make some comments only from what I know. Um, the one thing that I have a tough part with this project, I'm an accountant by trade. Finance. So if you gave me what you were wanting to cut and exactly what we were doing, I could probably make more detailed comments. But I can't because uh, all I have is what I've been told about. The fact that we were looking at taking an FTE from the library. And basically moving that FTE over to the courthouse for administrative purposes. My issue with that is, is that the library provides direct service to the citizens of Horney County. And when I say citizen, I mean. We help kids learn to read. We have one of the best summer reading programs in this state. And I think if you check other libraries, you'll find that they do not have the participation that we do at Horney County. So when I look at this, I think it's very important. That a kid learns to read rather than some paperwork get done at the county. Now I understand that you need backup. For duties. Okay, my real job during the day is managing Harley Electric Co-op. We run revenues of about fifteen million dollars a year. A payroll of probably close to five million dollars a year. I have one payroll clerk. My payroll clerk is still. High back up, my payroll person, because I manage that company and that's my responsibility. I don't go out and hire more people to back up the backup. But I think that's important, that you use the people that you have. Teach them how to help out. But also I'm gonna share with you the cooperative way of doing things. Also, if I lose my payroll clerk. And I'm not there to do it, I have seventeen other electric co-ops in the state of Oregon. That will send me a person to do my payroll. We have thirty six counties. If you need a payroll person to back somebody up, I would think out of the other thirty five. They have somebody that can send and help you through that crisis. I do not agree with hiring somebody just to be ready to go. That's like putting some people in the bullpen, ready to come in and change out the picture. We don't need a bull. The other thing that I would like to say is to, before you make these kind of cuts where you take services away from the citizens. And just do administrative services that most of our citizens don't get a benefit from. That you take a real strong look at the resources you do have. And make sure that every employee doesn't have extra time. That maybe they could do some job sharing and take some, some of that support. And I'm willing to help you with that. I got over sixty years of experience managing people and managing business. That's why I said I probably shouldn't be retired, and I'm not, because I love what I do. And again, thank you for letting me make those comments.
Thank you. The next one is not a yes or a no, but a probably, so I'm gonna ask anyway. Uh, Richard. Baze, Basick? Is that right?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll.
Did I get your net last name right?
It's, it's Bassi.
Bassi, okay.
It doesn't look the way it's pronounced, so um. Yes, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'm tall, is this okay?
I, I can hear you, I don't know.
Okay, um, so, um. What I have to say is from a net science perspective and some of it sort of backs up. What has been said, I don't, I don't know. Um, so I'm very much an outsider. I've been here for over a year now, but I have been coming here before that every year. The reason I'm able to be here for more than a week or two weeks at a time is because of the library. And the library's services. Um, I'm a digital nomad. I can choose to work, I work remotely, that's what that means. Um, so I can choose to work anywhere. In the world that has Wi-Fi. So of all those places in the world, I choose Horney County. Right. Um, and also make it sound from England. I've traveled, I've seen a lot of the world, I've seen libraries in the world. And um, as has been said again, um, the services. Um. That this library offers is way, way above and beyond. What I've experienced elsewhere in the world. And some of that is because of the, the nature of the county. Being sparsely populated and what it is, but still, um. It's really unbelievable to me. Um, and, and yeah, like, I'm not gonna list all the cities I've been to in the world, but. It's unbelievable to me what this library offers. And what it enables me to be able to do. And, but it's not just about me. The money I spend in the businesses here. You can multiply that by all the people in the tech industry who are like me, remote workers. Disposable income, pumping money into the economy, creating many economy. That disappears. Without this library offering these services. And um, sort of, and the other thing I wanted to say was that. Um, what Doug touched on as well, um, that. Um, the sixth, um, the library being the sixth biggest, um.
Recipient.
Recipient of public funds and services. Yeah, so, yes, Doug talked about it possibly being the number one contributor to revenues. To balance that. So that brought in what I was gonna talk about, Doug said, which is. It's fine to say, to make this argument, that the library is the sixth biggest. Recipient of public funds. But statistics have to be given context like that. So what is the value the library gives to justify? That recipient's money? You know, does it, does it give the, the most of any of the other public services? If you've seen the photographs of how full the summer reading program classes are in the library, you can't. You can't walk, the, the kids, there's, there's a hundred kids. As, as has been said, being taught to read, being encouraged, being shown how interesting it is. To receive education over the summer. And, and some of this happened actually over the winter as well. Um. This is the value that doesn't have dollar signs on it, that the library gives. Is what it gives back into the community. And I've lived in Portland where that word is bandied around very lively community. But here, it's very, very tangible. That it's strong. And it's very, very valuable. And you really, really should think twice before taking these programs.
Next is. Julia Sharp?
I'm just gonna read, but I don't really say. Thank you. My name's Julia Sharp and I live just outside of Burns. I am here today to share how important the Army County Public Library is to our community. And to request that you find another area to cut funds. When I moved here in two thousand eight, I immediately located the library and obtained my library card. I was very impressed with the high quality of the building and friendly and knowledgeable staff. It was much improved from the last place I was. I must admit, I was a little bit surprised that I would find such a high-quality library in Burns. Um, sorry to say that, um. And it still is a very good quality. In two thousand thirteen, my first of two daughters uh, was born and we attended storytime every Wednesday. And now we look forward to the fun and educational summer program. Um, we don't even take advantage of half the things that they offer for kids. I mean, I'm writing a list of them all because. I'd be living at a library if we did everything that they offered. Um. The library also provides a safe, free place to kill time in between parents and appointments. Like I said, we live out of town. So if we've got an hour to kill, we go to the library. Um. And also, this is what I'm, I'm out of the main now, um. Burn in Horney County, there's not a lot to do. I mean, there is. Compared to other places, larger cities, communities than whatever for kids, um. The library is a place my kids ask to go to for fun. And I think that's real cool. They think of it as. And how you might go bowling, so I think that's really. Um, I personally use many of the library's features, audiobooks, uh, the amazing network of life that these starting libraries. Uh, makes the wait times for any book or movie you want almost nothing. I can get pretty much any book I want somewhere within the library system within, within a week or something. Perfect. Um. I use the coffee machine, uh, the library of things for baking my kids with their cakes and movie rentals. Um, I also see so many community members and passersby of all ages benefiting from the library's computers and wifi. Unfortunately, many people cannot afford to purchase books, computers, movies, or even the newspaper. I believe equal access to information is extremely important. Um. For a safe and thriving community. Oh. I'm sorry, cutting library services, which I consider library services, services as essential services. This will further separate the haves from the have-nots. Our library is doing such a great job. I would hate to see it wither away. And reducing funding even temporarily is already a step in that direction. Based upon reactions. Uh, to my Facebook post yesterday about this hearing. I stand here today representing not only myself and my family, but also thirty three others and counting. I'm sorry, thirty three families and counting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David. Samuels?
Hughes. Uh, I'm gonna pass right now. I, I do appreciate the speakers who have spoken. They have pretty much hit the areas that I think are very important. Mr. Flippenz, what Mr. Flippenz had to say, I think was extremely important. What Mr. Fur had to say, I think was extremely important. I think the county, obviously, I'm sorry, I'm not hiding, I'm not controlling now, I'm starting to spout, but. but, you know, here's the deal, we're here, we're expecting, this is about the budget. We don't have the budget up here. Can we need to go ahead and have, be prepared for what's going on? I know our speakers are I think too that we need to understand that we do have another, another ninety-day allowance for this, that people ought to get together, start considering, thinking about what's going on here, how we can go ahead and begin to consider working together rather than cutting things right away. But honestly, our speakers probably previously won. And I think they have pretty much touched the areas that we need to go ahead and touch. I know there are others that wish to go ahead and speak, and they probably have other issues too that need to be brought up. And I think that's very important too. And thank you very much for having us meet in the seat. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Zuck?
All right. Well, thank you, Commissioner, for, um, to speak at this meeting. Someone else said, thank you for maybe getting accessible to the public by ordering later in the evenings. Um, thank you for letting us speak about a topic that I think was important to this community. My name's Nathan Zuck, I live in Hines. Uh, people with much more, uh, knowledge about the budgetary considerations uh, in circumstance of this topic is already spoken, but I'll just be speaking as a patron and someone who utilizes, uh, library services. Uh, libraries today are much more than collections of books, they're more than places where we go to read. Uh, they're important places where the community members can all come together. Uh, places for children to discover a love of reading, uh, places for adults to learn new things and new skills that allow them to live richer, fuller lives. Arnie County Library has so many resources and provides so many benefits to this community. It should be a point of pride that our library is so well organized and able to provide important initiatives like reading programs and the library of things. Uh, lending things like Wi-Fi hotspots, canning supplies, uh, household tools, all these things that, uh, uh, people that, uh, to do things that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do. While acknowledging the theme of this meeting being budgetary considerations, I encourage the county to continue its full budgetary support of the library. Uh, because the institution of the library and its contributions, both tangible, intangible, uh, are something that makes it one of the biggest, uh, things in Arnie County that makes this a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I've got quite a few not sure's here, but just to make sure everybody gets a chance, I might go through Debbie Muse. Uh, Karen Booth. Jaylen Thompson. Dorothy Delaney.
Yes.
Um, and then there's a perhaps, Dave Muse.
Oh, that was me. Sorry.
Okay. So the other one, the other one back up then to make sure I don't skip anybody was David, it looks like Samuels. Do you wish to speak, sir?
Yeah. Oh. Hi, I'm David Sander. Um, my handwriting was not the greatest.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Uh, and I just wanted to bring up one point that potentially has been brought up in all the letters that the county has received. And the library, so Arnie County has a lot of, and I should say Burns, has a lot of uh, federal agencies that bring in temporary and seasonal employees every year. Um, I work at the egg station that brings in about thirty to forty people every year. And the library provides a place for them to go in town that they can print important documents or just spend time away from the, um, right, provided housing that isn't a cram. So they can go somewhere that's free and air-conditioned. And they can get away and find some space for themselves. And that's not really a space that, um, exists otherwise in Arnie County. Um, and all these seasonal employees come from across the country. We have, this year we have people from um, as far as Massachusetts and all the way down to California, Texas, Washington, and several states in the Midwest. And they come to this county, come to Burns, they could be coming from urban areas or rural areas. And they come away seeing that Burns is this very remote and very rural community. Um, that within greater society, there's this sense of how Burns is because it is a rural community. Um, and they come here and they see that we have this really great service in the library. This isn't a rundown building that's not nice to be in. It's really well-maintained and it's a good place to be that provides a lot of services to the community. And so they leave Burnings. Um, and they say, you know, these like rural communities are not desolate wastelands, like they have things that are good. Um, and they come away, you know, seeing that rural America is a really cool and like very nice place to be when people judge it unfairly. So a library is a public-facing, direct-service entity that they give those services. Um, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, couple of maybes here. Um, I'm sorry, I can't quite make out the first name, but O'Connor.
Emily.
Emily, alright, okay.
I would like to echo Julia's sentiments. The, I'm the mom of four young girls in the community. Uh, the library is one of the few places we have that we can go, especially in the winter. Storytime is the highlight of our week. Um, we go for fun, like Julia said, my girls, on a weekly basis, beg me to go to the library. Um, it hurts my heart to see funding cut to that. Our, our school systems already don't have art or music. Um, and it would, it's just really frustrating to see more cuts to children's services. Um, I support having libraries newly funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Another maybe, Robert Hur, Hurley, Hur. Is that correct?
Yeah, like skateboard manufacturer. Thank you, Doug Sharp. Uh, I'm willing to do come, come to Arnie, Arnie County, I've owned dinner for years, but the, the library has been a shining beacon to me. One of the things that kind of took me aback, because I come from back east, raised in the Chicago suburbs. You only have school four days a week here. Twenty percent of the education in your children is not being done, and you're doing the best you can, I know. But, uh, the library is picking up some of your slack. Teaching children a love of reading and a thirst for knowledge is the biggest gift you can give your children. I use libraries for many things. Uh, in a lot of videos, uh, if I wanna find out about cosmology, study the universe, it's there. If I wanna find out about quantum mechanics, it's there. If you wanna read a mystery, science fiction, it's there. And in a way, uh, I'm kind of disappointed, this is such a wide, the reading, having that chance to read my book. But I want to thank you for your consideration. I realize the budget constraints. But like others and all people in this room, I hope you can find a way to diminish any cuts that might be made to the library's budget, because it's a gift in Arnie County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one up is Arthella Klein.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. Um, my question is kind of mundane, I guess, but this morning you mentioned that the FTE that you were counting was rounded up. Was that rounded up for the library only? Or was that rounded up for the entire county?
It, as, as it was mentioned, um, the budget message mentioned a hundred and nine FTE total. Is that right?
Four.
Hundred and four.
Yeah, there's a hundred and nine when you add it up, but it says hundred and four.
Yeah. Um, some of them do get rounded up, because we end up with a, with a five-point-seven-five, a five-and-a-half.
Five-point-two-five.
Yeah.
It was rounded up. Yeah. Should be rounded down if you're gonna use that series.
Yeah, but then it doesn't show a full picture either. So, um, part of those numbers come from, there's a budget summary report that we have to do as part of the budget process, and it won't let you put in percentages or halves or quarters or whatever. So those do get rounded up. And I'm gonna say I probably took those numbers off of that report is why, is why that happened.
Okay.
Without potentially doing my due diligence and transferring it as a decimal in a Word document, because that document is a Word document versus the form that it goes, that I took it from, uh, is a, is a PDF document that won't let you put decimals in. So, um, part of that could be on me, and I'll, and I'll, yeah. And I'll accept responsibility for that.
Okay. Okay, and then the other thing I was wondering about was, as you adjust these FTE, do you also adjust PERS, retirement, healthcare, all of FICA, all those things that go with an employee?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so there's a possibility that then there's a core issue with the budget if it includes those benefits.
And it does.
And then where does that money go? Because you're, could be over-budgeting or under-budgeting, then your personnel.
So, some of those line items for benefits, we do over-budget, because, um, throughout the year, if you have higher-than-expected benefit costs, uh, the only way you can, you can satisfy that is by doing a supplemental budget. So if you do put a little bit extra in some of those lines, then it helps cover that. Uh, that's another topic though, too, in, in increased costs. We're already being told by the state that PERS contributions by the county are likely to go up at least three percent next year from what they are this year.
But that seems like that would need to be a line item in the budget.
It is.
To be reflected in that way.
It, it is. Um, just a
Concerned with there being some differences in what you are comparing with the FTE and our library budget that it might not reflect appropriately of the money that it's actually costing or could cost. And I think maybe that's something that someone could investigate and then bring back to the
Um, well, just real quick, like in the budget for this year, and there are line items for social security, workers' comp, PERS, medical insurance, dental, life, unemployment insurance, and Oregon paid leave. Those are all separate line items that are budgeted for. And they're all figured on a percentage, usually a formula of what the base salary is. So if you have a base salary of ten thousand and each, whatever the percentages are, then that goes in consolidated into each one of those lines for, for all the employees.
And you probably have an idea of how much each employee is going to cost in a percentage of benefits basis versus percent.
Yes, I mean, I don't, that part, because, because all the benefits are lumped together in, in a PERS line item, in a social security line item, instead of being another page long and having a separate line for each employee, each position. Um, they are, and we can run reports very, very quickly to show what the full, the full expense of a position is, base salary with benefits. It's, it's very easy to run.
I, I think what you're kind of getting at is, did we base it off of six employees versus five-point-two-five in the budget process? Is that kind of what you're asking?
That, I was wondering about that as being a possibility that it might not be quite that.
That's kind of what she's asking.
Okay, no, we did not. Um, it's based on what the base salary of the individual is, and the base salary is based on whatever their current grade and step is. And, uh, whether they're full-time, part-time, whatever. So, so the benefits come are based on what the individual's base salary is.
Your regards to their FTE.
No, what their FTE is. If it's a half-time FTE, a point-five FTE, if a full-time FTE was twenty thousand, I'm just throwing a number out there, was twenty thousand dollars, half-time FT is ten thousand dollars, and then those percentages for PERS and social security and everything reflect off of what the actual salary is for that position, whether it's a half-time, a quarter-time, a three-quarter time, or a full-time, whatever the base salary is for that position is what the benefits, how the benefits are figured out.
Okay, based on a general percentage.
Yeah, I don't know all the percentages. Our, our payroll, um, individual, HR specialist has all that loaded into the computer and it figures it all out for us.
Okay, okay. It might be good to kind of look at that, those
The, the budget wasn't based off of the five-point-two-five, it wasn't based off of six.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it was based currently.
Okay, that was based, that's, right.
Just, just as a bit of an example, uh, the current year's budget, uh, PERS is budgeted at forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, actuals for last year were forty-four thousand, five hundred. Actuals for the year before that were thirty-four thousand, eight hundred, and thirty-four and thirty. So, so you can see just even in running actual sums, that we're right there within the ballpark of what we're budgeted at.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Next is, well, signed up with Cheryl, but Cheryl spoke. Do you want to say anything else? Okay. Um, Linda Elroy?
I'm gonna pass the questions I have already been asked.
Okay. Um, now, again, a couple of not sure's, just because I wanna make sure everybody has the opportunity. Uh, Carolyn Whitney?
I'll pass, thank you.
Holly Smith?
Hi, I'm Holly Smith, and I'm on the budget board. It's very important that you people are here today and asking questions. This is how we'll get some answers to the problems that we're facing. A copy of the budget is at the library. Isn't it, I think. So for those people that want to see what has been passed in the budget, sorry, I have market situation. Um, so that if anyone wants to see that, go to the library and look at the budget. Come to the budget needs. Please, ask your questions there. Help us. This is not easy. It's not easy for anyone to face cuts. It's very difficult, and nobody wants to be the bearer of bad news. But I appreciate the questions that are being asked, and hopefully we can gain information and ideas to help us create a better budget. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, another not sure, uh, and I'm not sure, so, Art, Art? Ms. Art? Steven, Mr., Miss, I'm not quite sure what's the first name is.
Sharon.
Sharon, I'm sorry.
And I think
Pass, okay. Steve Grassi.
Good job, commissioners. Thanks. And I want to tell everybody I hate my back to the crowd. We talk to the crowd, so I'm a little disappointed it's set up the way it is. And I want to tell you, thanks for doing this in the evening. This this is why. So for the record, I'm Steve Grassi, and I am a retired Harnett County judge, and I served from ninety nine to twenty sixteen. And as somebody else said, I'm a newcomer. I've only been here fifty three years. You look around, there's plenty that have been here a lot longer than me. Somebody mentioned storytime. My kids want the storytime. My grandkids want the storytime, and now my great grandkids, all three of them are on the storytime. This library means so much to this community. So eight or nine years ago, I said, eight and nine years ago, I sent my budget message. This is a common and the court's done a pretty dang good job that in between them adjusting, adjusting to get by with tough times. But clearly, you're also ahead of the wall. You also have some opportunities. You've been talking to David Glenny. Been in the paper. We know the opportunities. Hundred eighty houses here would make one heck of a difference in the context. That's not going to happen in a year, but in ten percent. And I want to set the record straight on one thing said. Between ninety nine and two thousand and sixteen, there were two comprehensive wage analysis is done by LGPI, Local Government Policy Institute. Those should be standard records still. You can certainly find the bill for it because this county paid a lot of money to have those done, but it was not back in nineteen ninety eight. There are two comprehensive ones done. Set the steps, set the grades. You know, it's been mentioned a little bit and certainly was in a paper. The Burns Mothers Club started this thing forever, long ago. When I came into office, the old white had the loose funds sitting in stocks. County governments cannot own stocks. He'd been told by Attorney General would get out of the stocks. They all had enough clout, political clout to keep that pressure off him. As a brand new judge, I didn't. We had to move him out. And guys like Fred Swetland stepped up. We got the foundation going. We got the money out of sitting in county revenue spots. Dedicated solely to the library. And you've heard how good it's been managed over those years and how much it's put into the county. Commissioner Enduro, you've been there a lot. I don't know how much the rest of you have. I don't know how much you know is really there. I was just in Ireland, and I was in the Trinity University, and they got a library. And I'm going to tell you ours. There's nobody got Western Americana like we have. We have one off books. And I just heard the day that Bill Hammond, somebody else, is coming to our library. It's an amazing history. The value of that library to our history, to this community, to our children, to the users of our library, and the economic development is unmatched. There's nothing else like it. It will do all of those things. This turned out tonight ought to be a solid message to you. I know how tough it is when you run short on money and how hard it's going to be. But if I was you guys, I'd be working very hard trying to figure out a way how you're going to fill that in and backfill some of this and keep this going. These folks are going to support it. And then you said this meeting was about not just about the library. Said it was about the county budget. When I came into office in nineteen ninety nine, there were three budget board members or laypeople, not the elected ones. When combination had seventy two years on that budget committee. I know, and I take nothing away from your budget members today. But I know some of those members have been there since my time. I hope you do a solid process this year and let others take a look at their involvement, their participation. Don't just keep that until you get to the seventy two years of your budget committee members. It didn't make sense or good for Dale. But it didn't make sense, and it needed to change. And I'll advocate all that it's time to do some changes and upgrade of that piece of your budget process if you want. Thanks.
Thank you. I will say that this year we do have one budget board member that is not and for continuity sake, first couple of years, I was hoping to have that continuity in the budget board for myself and to carry that forward into my first couple of budgets. But we do have one budget board member that is not going to renew, and even if they were going to renew or desired to renew, we would still go out for solicitation and then make a selection based on our whoever is applied. So we do have, and it's this captive group that we have here right now. We do have a vacant budget board position coming open at the end of the year. So watch for that announcement. And if you're interested, please submit a a letter of interest to the county court. Pat Sharp?
My name is Pat Sharp, and I am a retired educator. I am also a avid avid library user and grandmother to two granddaughters who, as my daughter-in-law explained, are also avid library users and will be avid library users, probably for the remainder of their life because of the experience they've had at the Harnett County Library for their entire lives so far. I want to thank the court for listening to us. Your job is not easy. It's never easy when you have to take away, not add to the budget. It's always much easier to add to the budget. You have a little extra. That doesn't happen very often, unfortunately. And I can't speak. I can't add anymore to the passion that all of these people have brought forward to you about how they feel about our library. But I do want to talk a little bit about the experience that I've had in terms of having to manage budgets in public education. And as you know, those have been very difficult times. Very often, sometimes they weren't too bad, but very often they were very difficult. And there is nothing harder than what you're having to do. But one of the things one of the general comments that I want to make and bring to your attention is that you seem to be indicating that Harnett County is in a shrinking economy. Is that a wrong assumption that I'm making from what you've shared with us?
I'd like to say it's at least static at this time unless some of these developments and things pan out and happen. And therefore, in relative terms, the expenses are not relatively static. They are going up and up. So yes, it declines because in a relative sense.
So my my comment to that is that a community that perceives and may actually be in a shrinking economy would be shooting themselves in the foot to diminish a very highly effective library that serves the entire community. One of the things we know about communities that don't have libraries, especially rural communities that don't have libraries, is that they have a higher crime rate. They have lower employment opportunities. And they have lower literary rates with standards recent. The library and the schools complement each other, especially in these times when our schools have had to cut down on their libraries also. I don't think our school district, District Three, has a library. I think they work with our public library for those services. The other thing that I want to comment on is the idea of grants and volunteers. It's something that as an educator working with budgets has always was always thrown up to us. Well, you can get parents to volunteer, and you can write grants. And all of that sounds real nice, but it is not effective if you are trying to run a business. I think there's no one who would want to ask for volunteers to come in and help them run their business. Volunteers are great, but you volunteers don't have to be accountable to you. You you don't evaluate volunteers. You get what you get. And I would be a prime example of that. I'd be the first one to step up if the library needed volunteers. But when it was time for me to do my stuff, I'd want to be doing my stuff, not volunteering at the library. I can't make that kind of commitment, you know? I I can be here maybe for a month or two, and I can promise to be there on Mondays, but that's not what the library needs from me. The other thing about that is writing grants is not simply filling in the blanks. Writing grants takes expertise. It takes knowledge, and more than anything else, it takes a heck of a lot of time. And if you're cutting FTE and suggesting, oh, go out and get grants, that's like an oxymoron. That doesn't work. Who's going to be the person going out to get those grants? So I would ask you to consider that. It hasn't worked in education, even though we threw it around a lot. The other thing in terms of the budget, and thank you Judge Hart and your suggestion, I did go home this morning and review the county budget, and I would suggest that everyone do that. It's there online for you to see. It's very easy to read. And I want to kind of switch around how you've described the library being in the sixth highest position. There are only two positions in terms of FTE that are lower than the library. And that is the landfill and the fair. The library has six FTE. I saw administrative FTE of twenty nine, twenty seven in some departments. I would ask you to look at the ratio of benefit you get from the FTE that you have in all those places. I think the six FTE at our library gives us a lot of bang for the buck. And I would urge you not to cut funding for our Harnett County Library. Thank you.
Next is Karen Nelson.
I have to take some notes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners for allowing us to speak. I want to talk about the good things at the library. Number one, I don't have a printer. Do you guys have printers at home? I go to the library because it's like ten cents. It's amazing. They have teen book, teen book to movie clubs. They have the Stitch and Learn Craft Club. Do you guys know what's going on tomorrow at the library? Are you kidding me? It's the big club party, Judge Hart. Why should I care? Like, I just encourage you to follow them on Instagram or Facebook. They have so many activities, and they've really bumped it up the last year. Isabel is amazing, and they even had a Shiva session there the other day. Isn't that amazing that we have a building where we can do Shiva stuff? Wow. Journey Under the Sea was presented by the Museum of Natural and Cultural History. Close to a hundred kids attended. A hundred. Where else are kids going? Where are they working? What are they doing? They're going to the library. Okay, sorry. I also use the library to check out lots of books for free because today doesn't pay me a lot of money. Okay, so I just want to say that a friend, Heather Schultz, said, save the library. I love all that it does, adult classes, kids classes, free classes, community involvement, home devices, pot spot seeds, baking pans, internet heritage room, and more. So my question is about the budget. If we've been in a budget crisis for like six years, why do we have multimillion dollar projects like the Justice Center and Fairgrounds on there? It feels like you're just picking a little library because there's no one else to pick on. Thank you.
I do follow the library on social media, but a lot going on. Next up, Kate Marsh?
Yes, but I spoke this morning, so if there's anyone else who hasn't.
There's only you and one other person, so if you'd like to speak again, I think that would be fine.
I'm Kate Marsh. I'm a Burns resident, a newcomer. Seventeen years, I think. So this morning I talked about literacy. And so this evening, what I want to concentrate on is creativity and inspiration. Because I think that's that our library is one of the great foundations for allowing that to happen with our youth. We need a place for them to be able to express their interests by having the access to all of those things that the library has to offer. Now, it may be that a young person, a granddaughter, goes to the library for a reading program, but what they might see is something else there that sparks their interest, and it may be a muffin pan, for all I know. It could be, but my point is that in the library, there are a lot of things to see, a lot of things to experience, and that that wealth of availability is what gives kids inspirations. And from those inspirations, they can be creative. When they can express themselves creatively is a boost to their self-esteem. So the library provides a place for kids to feel safe, to to get well, to feel whole, to experience life with other people that they may not see in school, to be around other adults perhaps besides their teachers and their parents, to be around other kids that they don't have in their classrooms. And all of that gives them inspirations inspiration for ways of battling life, of being exposed to things that allow them to express themselves creatively. And in that way, as I say, to become more more to have to have more self-esteem. And I think that's something that we need to nurture. We need to create more of these environments or more times for these environments to to allow our entire county community to have those experiences. So I'm not relating specifically to your budget cuts. I'm relating to the emotional side of things. But also, I think the inspiration and and the creativity that can come from it is as important as those other parts. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Mike Leosa.
Hi, I'm Mike Leosa. I'm a member of the Library Foundation Board. And as seems to be the trend, I'll start by saying that we've been in the community a little over a dozen years. And shortly after we came here, someone told us that maybe maybe if we were lucky, our kids could be locals. But it was all wrong for us. I have two points I'd like to make. And my first point But it was all wrong for us. I have two points I'd like to make, and my first point comes in two parts and starts with a joke. There's been some concern that the library is the sixth largest expenditure of public funds in the general fund. That's actually really easy to solve. We break the library into two departments. We have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday department, Thursday, Friday, Saturday department, and then it could be eleven and twelve. But of course, that doesn't really solve anything. What matters is that it's about five percent of the expenditures in the general fund. And of course, there's other funds, so it's probably a little bit less than five percent of all of the expenditures. Like Richard, I'm a knowledge worker. I can work anywhere in the world that I can get in. My wife is a physician, and there's a worldwide shortage of doctors. We could choose living or, but we choose Harney County. And we choose Harney County because of the community. Because it's rural and there's a vibrant community here. So many rural towns across the country have been hollowed out when a Walmart opens twenty miles away. But that doesn't happen in Harney County. And I think part of that is because there ain't nothing twenty miles away, right? And that gives us a lot of disadvantages, but it gives us a lot of advantages and gives us a strong community. There is no question that you will have to make difficult decisions to spend the money you have among the many services that county provides that it keeps for it. You're elected to be our representative to make those hard decisions. Commissioner Sheldon said that she's happy that so many people have turned out for this and wished that more people turned out for some of the other issues you discuss. I think you should think that as a sign that this, that the library is important to the community. This is the community telling you that as you are making those difficult decisions, it is important to the community that you maintain the library. My second point is simpler. It's about grants. There was apparently some confusion about whether or not you support the library's uh supply for grants. I've heard similar confusion from other departments in the county. So I challenge the court right here and right now. Or maybe not right now. I don't know all the public laws. Maybe you have to wait for your next scheduled regular meeting. But I challenge you to make a resolution that you support every department aggressively seeking grants to support funding for their current services, or if they can, to find fully grant funded additional services for the county. We don't have a lot of money in this county. Every dollar we can bring in makes us all a little bit richer. So that's my challenge to you. Let's get a resolution, pass a resolution, and make it very clear to every county employer that we want grants coming in to help support our budget. Thank you.
I I will say that uh it would be the goal, my goal for the county to uh to not have to rely on grants so heavily. But in these times, it's definitely a uh a funding source that helps us get through these times. So I I one hundred percent support any and every department and and other fund within the county to reach out and seek out uh grant opportunities. One thing that I was told by Mr. Flippenson, the foundation, is that part of their role is to do that grant writing and management process in my, for the library. Is that is that correct?
Well, Judge Hart, I think what we were in the context of is that originally when the foundation was formed, uh, we are a, just everybody's information, we are a five oh one C three charitable foundation, okay? We are not governed by the county court. We are a separate entity. Everyone on the board is volunteer. Ever since I've been on, we have not paid, we have paid wages to people who provide services. Like, we have the project in the Western History Room, we got a grant, we paid the wages of that person to do that work. Our function and what we try to do is that many grants that everybody wants to talk about, county is not eligible for, okay? Like, if you want to go to the Ford Family Foundation, you want to go to the Warren Community Foundation, any of those foundations, and by the way, Warren Community Foundation is the largest foundation in the United States. Okay, so it is a very large one. They do not grant government entities. They will grant to a five oh one C three, and so we, that is our function. We try to do the grants that are eligible for a nonprofit. And then we use those grants, do programs, and support the library. It is not our function as a foundation to work and get to the point where we're running the library. If that's something that needs to happen, this county has to decide to make that its separate tax industry. If that's what you want, because I can tell you just as volunteers, we will never get there to where the Harney County Library Foundation funds that whole library. We're never going to get there.
No, as with.
But, you know, we wrote checks last year in the excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So we do help a lot. But also what you don't see, and that's why you and I are going to get together Monday to talk about grants, because we also get grants that just come and we pay for the program. It's kind of like the landscaping. You know, you didn't have to pay the contractor. The foundation did the landscaping, paid the contractors. So there's also even other money that's being done that's just through the foundation. The other thing is, I always feel, we also bring in just regular donations. We have a person that's actually anonymous. Every year gives us five thousand dollars, the foundation. That's how important the library is to them. And we can use it, however, to support the library. So that's kind of our function, you know, I I don't think you probably haven't had, maybe Mr. Grassley can help us with this. Have you ever had somebody walk in and write a check five thousand dollars to the county and say, use it however you want? Yeah, it doesn't happen because we don't, you know, we as citizens, we pay taxes, we pay our property taxes. We think we've done our share, so we don't turn around and write another check. But sometimes when you have a charitable foundation like ours, you go, hey, it's a good purpose to do that. But it is not, I I won't say it is our function to write every grant for the library. Because some of those are government grants that you are eligible for, and I believe those should be written by county.
Yeah. Uh, the recent grant that was applied for through the state library for forty-nine thousand dollars for the, I think it's the Make It, Makersmith. That forty-nine thousand, um, I believe, I mean, we could have done that. The county could have applied for that one. So you so you are applying for other grants outside, not just ones that are not available to the county.
Yeah, that, yeah, that too. And we're the fiscal agent. I know I said it, but I know about three other nonprofits that actually I have helped form in this community. And we do a lot. We have what we call Main Street projects that have happened downtown. Those are over getting close to a million dollars that we have. The Harney County Opportunity Team that did the community center. We make it possible for those businesses because they're not eligible to get that grant directly. We bring it into the nonprofit and we help with those projects.
Not this nonprofit, another.
No, and that's what I'm saying. That's things that we try to do to help. You know, and and, you know, my thing that um reached me a little bit, we made comments about, you know, the economy's not doing well. We need economic development. We used to have an economic development officer, or a person, or a company. We don't really have an officer anymore.
We still have the Economic Development Contract, but a lot of the services that 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 they were performing are covered by SBDC and the hub, or I mean, the partnership.
That's correct. I'm also on the High Desert Partnership Board. You're going to have a hard time finding a board. I'm not wrong.
Um, all right. Um, I would like to note too that it's the the project on the side of the library, the painting and the the park area there. Um, the county did pay six thousand dollars towards that project that was outside of the library's budget. It was billed to the building of uh maintenance fund. So so there's there's other funds coming from the county too for these projects too that are outside of the library's budget itself. So. And a late sign up, Rick Roy.
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, if you want to get more more people coming, um doing morning meetings is not going to work. Uh, so I'm going to look at the library a little bit different. So I'm retired BLM. I worked with Bill for a number of years. So one of the things we have a hard time doing and listening to this gentleman over here is recruiting volunteers. We're not recruiting, but what volunteers do, we're recruiting summer employees, be that fire, uh range, anything like that. Because they don't want to come here because there's nothing to do here, right? Um, and the whole, the whole concept of what it is in a rural community. Um, I look at the library more as an economic development and something to attract people. What are the three things people look for when they, he heard my spiel already? Uh, what are three things?
Education.
And amenities.
Yeah.
Right? Those are things that help attract people, right? You can build maybe a hundred and eighty homes. Some aren't sure where those people are going to work, but um you know, to me, I kind of see that as kind of pie in the sky, but and I worked with with Fred on on the Main Street uh because I'm one of the grant recipients. But I sit here and go, was that such a good idea? Because where's this community going? Right? So we're going to do this again in two years? And then you're going to raise my property taxes and then you're going to turn them on and cut services? Well, that's, and I understand, but the library isn't attractive. It's it's not a weight on the county. Um, it's something to use um to say, look what we've got. How will we be going to get um? I worked for BLM for twelve years. We couldn't keep employees. They come here and when they they put in their year or two because they were required to, and then they leave. There was, why, why are they going to stay? And they went back somewhere else. Uh, if they were married, had significant significant other, um, they wanted out. I I think one of the things I said, someone said it's something short sighted. Uh, to me, it is kind of short sighted uh because you you need to have something that wants to make people stay here. There has to be something. Not everybody wants to go shed hunting and super sage sage ranks, right? Uh, there's got to be a little bit more. And, you know, I was outside working on the way to here one day and I watched a hundred kids walk by, go in. You know, that that's a positive thing. Uh, and I know it's difficult to manage budgets. I know. But I think it's short sighted doing kind of what you're proposing when the library should be actually be used, really could be used to help with the economic driver for the community. So thank you for your time.
All right, that takes us to the end of our list of speakers. I will open up. Yeah.
Um, can I change my mind and say something about what I think I want to talk about?
I was just getting ready to give one last call. So, yes, please come up.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Sorry.
My name is Karen Kelly. I'm a former substitute teacher. Um, new here in twenty twenty-two. Some of you may know my letter will significantly another John Seager. He repairs computers all over town. Um, I just wanted to say, we've talked a lot about enrichment. We've talked a lot about enrichment for children, and I would like to bring up enrichment for adults that goes right along with what the last gentleman talked about, about a selling point for Harney County. And that is, as taxpayers, we want to support things that we personally enjoy as adults. I mean, I love children. Obviously, I'm a teacher, but I do need enrichment too. And I just wanted to report that when we got here, John and I taught a class on how to write Christmas letters. Because at the time, nobody had, well, very few people had the expertise on how to write Christmas letters at the library. We also, um, well, I I also wrote a book and they had various amounts of get togethers with fellow writers at the library. We had, so it's a job enrichment program. We also had um opportunities to meet writers. Important writers that were just starting out, and one of them used our Western History Room and now is a prolific writer. And I'm very happy that Harney County could um help that writer, uh, Dwayne Holing, start his series, and it's all about Harney County. So and other counties around here. He's from California, but so that's another example. As an adult, some of the fun things that I have participated in are the lectures. We haven't talked about the presentations for adults. Uh, I had to go to a presentation at the library about media rights. And now I'm looking around my backyard at things that look like insidious, that they might be real media events. I also had a chance to um go to a a speech, a talk, a presentation about women's diaries as they came over in the covered bags. And as a fellow woman and a writer, I was fascinated fascinated by how diaries have changed over the years, especially female writers. And so that was fascinating. Um, I've also participated in um get togethers for uh people that want to start computers and don't know anything about how to use a computer. And then when I was looking for work when I first got here, I used the computers extensively for job interviews and get togethers and stuff. And I, you know, we adult taxpayers, we spend all this money on taxes. I encourage everybody as an adult to participate in everything our library offers. It is for, oh, and then I just remembered one last thing. The um, I got to listen to two Oregon, Oregon. And that was a thrill. That was a real thrill. It'll work shots. So it isn't just for children. I love children, but it's for us adults too. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I forget, there is one more person here that wants to speak that's that's present. And before I forget, those of you online, I'm going to open it up to anybody online that would like to speak.
Uh, when you gave your opening remarks, I had, um, I did not understand something because the statement was made that the county is very stretched for funds and that there was very no, the tax base was based upon property taxes. And the other sources of income were rather trivial compared to the property taxes. And then Commissioner Sheldon shared about this, the importance of the overallocation of groundwater and the devastating effects it can have. It's not for many, and the economic impact it could have. And I totally suffered that. We lost, I grew up in Everett, Oregon, and when the timber was extracted, extracted, the town folded. We have lost the Heinz lumber mill here, the Air Force Base closed. So the things that were early economic drivers in the community, the large So the things that were early economic drivers in the community, the large employers have left, and apparently despite attempts to start businesses, they are not successful. But if I'm understanding correctly, the county's revenues comes in property taxes, not from company revenues, taxes and company revenues. Is that not correct?
That's, that is correct. Our, our, our revenues come from property taxes and payment in lieu of taxes from the government. And, and then there's, so there's some others there, but those are the two major sources.
So we need to attract people to our community to provide good jobs. And we need to from those good jobs, they will buy homes and then we will start to have more revenue, property taxes. So I just want to, the argument that I heard about the economic downturn, I mean, the dire consequences to the economy, which I fully agree. I'm not sure that those problems are connected to the county's fiscal position in terms of raising revenue. What we need are more good jobs and homeowners. What I heard people share is what I would describe a vicious circle. We are in a vicious downturn in our economy. And we need a virtuous circle. We can attract digital nomads, we can attract school teachers that are excellent. We have our government employees who bring knowledge, many of them have advanced degrees and earn nominal salaries for that expertise. We have so many classes, we have a wonderful, the culture around it. Our de facto community center is the Elks Club, and it is widely, this is where everybody goes if they need to have a banquet or a meeting or whatever. So I really would encourage the county leadership to think in terms of virtuous cycles and not dwelling on vicious cycles. Now, I also want to share a very personal experience. I know that people have been devastated by wildfires, the ranchers, the loss of property. And I, as a working taxpayer and federal taxpayer, I fully support providing a safety map to help those ranchers get back on their feet. They are a vital part of our community and our economic system. But I want to give a ray of hope because I was raised on the Mackenzie River. And in twenty twenty, the Holiday Fire devastated seventy miles of my beloved community. So I know what the loss was by your hands. The emotional toll it takes on people. They have post-traumatics, post-traumatic stress. Some were living in homes that were uninsured, they had no economic resources to start again. The loss cannot be counted solely in terms of dollars. But the thing that that community did, the first two things they did was refill the community library. And to rebuild the community center. When I moved here, the place that I started to learn about this county was through the library. It provides a social group that is in the the rodeo provides a social group. So please, then bid, dream. I challenge you. That's what you were elected to do, and that's what we want to support you to do. Thank you.
And thank you. Appreciate those words. Um, so now I'm gonna open it up to Okay, um, just a moment, I'm gonna go online. Um, so I'm gonna go online. Is there anybody online that would like to make any comments? We'll give it just a second, see anybody, see if anybody's microphone comes off mute. And I'm not seeing anybody. If anybody is interested, I'll keep an eye on it and we'll get back to you. So ma'am?
Thank you, sir. I'm highly disabled, so it'll take me a couple minutes to get out to the mic. Thank you for letting me in and, and, and turn in here for a few minutes.
Quite all right.
All right, I'm gonna turn around so that everyone can see me and know me. My name is Val, I'm from Hardy County, and I, I live here in the county. My family among five hundred other people founded our, uh, town, Burn, Heinz, French plant, everywhere. People went out and they banded together, and I'm gonna continue to talk like this. Sorry, this is not up in front to you, just so that everyone can hear me. All right, so in the previous years, when the library came to be, there used to be a library, just kind of back in an office. That's all we had here for a library. So we all banded together and we thought, let's go to county court, let's go everywhere. So they said, yes, let's start building the library. That happened in nineteen sixty-eight here. But then there was a set of circumstances that happened with our community. We had economic stuff at that time. Then what happened? In nineteen sixty-eight, the library set for three years before that, as it was being built. There was so much, um, confrontation in the county over building the library, but we all banded together. So what happened to build the library and complete it? As a little child, with my grandmother's help, we went out among the community and all of us children went and we gave our lunch money, we gave our allowance money, we gave whatever money we could find. We even went further than that, to the end, out into Frenchland, out into all of the community, out to ranchers everywhere to complete our library. What happened? Well, we had bait sales, we had cake sales, Safeway's gave us money, we went to Ben. Lot of people over there that were business owners gave us money, there were great ranchers in our county that gave us money. What happened? Wow. All of a sudden, the building started to be completed when it had sat for three years, filed, the, the floor was laid. The west part, the walls were laid, and that was it. It rained on it, they did everything, so they kind of had to, you know, go back and bring in a lumber cutting deal and, and Heinz helped with that to finish the library. And as that's children and everybody in this community and out of this community built our library. That's what we have today, uh, here. And, you know, we talk about, uh, all these grants and stuff, where are we as a community? To put in money in these times of economic hardship, even if it's a nickel, a dime, a quarter, a dollar, fifty cents, your modeling can money. You know, go to the store and get some and give it, give as much as you can. You know, we give a five dollar bill? Give it to the library. You'd be amazed at how much that we collect and what we can do. So this is what we did in the previous years, and we've had so many economic hardships, we've had flood, fire, even worse than this, it burned the town down once before I was born. So we need to band together as a community. We need to go out there, and if you can even give, the very littlest that you can give, give it to the library. And see what happens. I know that we need grant funding, and it's very important for this community. But as a founding family of our community, this is what we need to do. When your barn burned down, we come out and we get all together and we build it. Your house burned down during the fires, then we go out to that place and we would build it. We would take a cutting plant, every Heinz, or we would go to Bald Mountain and get lumber and burn it down and cut it and build back the town. So this isn't the first time that we've had these horrendous fires, this close, it's burned the out part, it burns the heart. And greater other parts too. So just hang in there and band together, that's all I can say. And you know, if you got like five cents, four, a dollar, give it to the library, you could soon be amazed at how much you can give. And then we can continue on with the goodness of the library, because you know what? I learned how to speak from the library. I learned to go to other lands. You know, I went to the moon by myself and book. You know, I learned how to type there, and I learned how to do a quill. I learned how to weave. There wasn't anything that I had learned to do at the library from all of the programs that they have. So I just wanted to come and talk to you about this, and for all of you to know and spread the word, and hopefully this is online. So that maybe if you only give a quarter, a dime, a nickel, a penny, whatever you got, give it. And it will help improve our library even this much. So I appreciate all of you that are gathered here, and hopefully all of it, you are online. And also thank you to county court for letting me stand up and speak, and thank you, Judge, thank you Patty Doral, thank you commissioners. And I just wanted to stand up and say that. Cause we can build a beautiful library even better than what we have, and we can go everywhere in those books. And go to all of those programs and learn a thousand and one things. So I just wanted to come here and speak and to band together in our time of need, and even if we get a little bit of money, hey, it will help. Or we could get a lot, you never know. So go out there and just tell people, hey, this is what we need, and we need some help. So thank you for letting me speak tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll make one last call for the online, uh, viewers. They haven't seen anybody's microphone come off mute. All right, with that, I'll say I appreciate everybody's attendance this evening. I fish, I appreciate the heartfelt statements and comments. I appreciate the, uh, yeah, you know, where it comes from. Um, as a born and raised Hardy Countyan, I'm, uh, equally as concerned about our county in all aspects. And the library does provide value to our community. Um, it's a juggling act in this job to figure out and to prioritize, and that's where we're at. I would, uh, offer any closing remarks to Commissioner Sheldon, Commissioner Doral?
Uh, Judge Grasky, I do use the library. You, you said to see Patty there, but we all, we all use it, we all care about it. Uh, you know, thank you for coming out tonight. We apparently the words that were spoken, and we don't think it hurts.
I don't have anything else. I, I like to take notes when I listen, so I was listening, not really telling me, right? It just helps reinforce it here, so thank you very much, very good comments.
The, the, the videos from today and tonight will both be posted on the county's YouTube page. So it is there for every one of you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.